We could certainly have the homeowners send their reports to the code enforcement officer, or pictures of their growth and destabilization.
Right. That's important. Any other questions, comments?
So, I was on the site visit today, and I was looking for the culvert under the road, and I went down to find it and noticed there's a really big tree down right in front of it. And so it's going to create a dam, which will back up on this property. Maybe that's a good thing, if that's intended. Maybe it's not.
I don't think it was intended. I think I heard that that tree was knocked over by the power company and left. I'm not sure if it's technically in the right of way, or if that's a DPW question, or our applicant.
Okay.
This is Dave Ransom, owner.
Thank you so much for bringing that up.
Can you speak right into the mic? And if you could please introduce yourself.
Yeah. That better?
Yes.
A little closer? There we go. Thank you for bringing that up. That has been sort of a sore spot for us for a long time.
Mr. Ransom, if you could introduce yourself, please?
Oh, yes. David Ransom, owner of the property.
Thank you.
My wife, also owner of the property, is here with me as well. The tree that you're talking about was not always there. When we bought the lot, that tree was not down like that. We came back after an apparent horrible windstorm that took out power. And it's interesting, because one of my relatives who lives over in Moltenboro had gone by the lot and said, "It looks a lot different than the pictures you showed us." And she showed me the pictures that they took, and I'm like, "Where are all the trees?" Apparently, the municipal electrical department had to take trees out, because during that windstorm, they took out the power lines through there. And so that tree that you're speaking of was taken down by whoever the municipal electric department uses to take trees down and left there. And I asked about that, and people said, "Well, that's just the way it is." And when they started clearing our lot for the construction, I asked the people that were doing the tree clearing if they could pull that tree out of there, because it looked to me like it was a problem in the wetlands. And they said, "Sure, no problem," but nobody ever did it. So I tried to take it out myself, and an 18-inch chainsaw barely went through the diameter of that tree. The first piece I cut off was, I don't know, maybe 10 inches long. It was so heavy, I couldn't move it, so I gave up. And I talked to our builder about that, and he said, "Well, maybe we can figure that out." But to me, that is a problem, because it has changed the flow of that stream in there, and it's also, you know, obviously destroyed some of the foliage there. And as you suggested, there's a potential for that to impact water buildup there, because it can't get through the culvert. So it's an issue. I don't know whose problem it is, but that's how it got there.
Thank you. Sir. The windstorm, when roughly was that?
I believe it was 2023.
2023?
Yes.
That wouldn't have been around holiday season, Christmas?
I think it was right after the holidays, first part of the year in 2023. I'm not positive, because we weren't here then, but I heard rumblings from some of the neighbors that, yeah, there was a horrible storm that came through, took all the power out for days, and they had to come and trim trees so that they could restring the lines.
Do you mean January 23, or December 23?
January 23.
January 23, yeah. It sounds about right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Paul. It's not clear to me that the obstructed culvert is part of what we're hearing this evening, although I suspect it may be a problem for you in the future, should there be a significant rain.
Right. Yeah, it's actually the culvert that runs under Applewood that's been there forever, so. But it seems to be the potential to impact that, so. Thank you.
Just one last. And did you reach out, or did anybody reach out to Municipal Electric?
I did not.
Any further discussion?
My further thought is, maybe after this hearing, is we should discuss how to avoid the problem of having construction and driveways put in setbacks. You know, what process should our planning department, whatever shape it's in, can review and coach people that really this shouldn't be occurring?
I agree with that.
They are now requiring site plans, or they were a month ago. And that's helpful, because then it's clear where you should not build. But, you know, this is an after-the-fact application.
Yes, and we've also had conversations with conservation as far as marking where the edge of the buffer is.
Yeah.
A contractor comes in with his excavator, he sees a silt fence, and he thinks that's the limit, which it isn't. So I think we've been discussing that internally, to come up with some sort of badge system or otherwise way to mark it, and make sure we have a pre-construction meeting, make sure everyone understands.
Or require that the screening occurs on the point or at the line of 25 feet or 30 feet, and not right up against the wetland, so that it's clear where the silt fence is.
You mean to have the silt fence at the interface between the construction area and the buffer, rather than between the buffer and the wetlands?
On the edge of the buffer.
Yeah.
Where we're not supposed to go.
On the edge of the buffer, closest to the construction site.
Yes.
Rather than closest to the wetlands.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can make that suggestion? Absolutely.
And the other part of that is, not only with the buffer, but with the shoreline, you need to, you cannot go through the setbacks with construction equipment. You have to stay out of it when you build a house.
And Vaughn, to your point, I think we've always called that the no-touch buffer, and going in there to put up a silt fence is touching it.
Well, you put the silt fence on the edge of it.
No, no, what I'm saying is, the way they've done it in the past.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Is incorrect. So, yes, strictly speaking, they should be putting the silt fence between the construction zone and the buffer.
Right.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Any other further discussion? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
I think you.
We do have. We have one more. You want to reopen that public hearing? Okay, I'll have to reopen the public hearing. John?
Thank you. So, John Thurston, a resident. I was at the site visit tonight with the rest of the crew. Just want to touch base on why people come to Wolfboro. People come to Wolfboro because they think it's a slice of heaven, and they all want to be a part of it. They want to protect our natural resources, enjoy the area, bring their families, enjoy the holidays. Tonight, I think, is a great example of an applicant, a homeowner, working with the board to make sure that, they make sure that they work with the board, do what's right for our community. It's really nice to see. Appreciate the applicant's agent and the applicant for working with us to do the things that will help mitigate water into the lake, because without our natural resources, people won't want to come here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to speak from the public?
Hi, Lenora Clark, Conservation Commission. This does not pertain to the specific application, but to the site visit regarding the tree that fell. It's not the worst thing in the world to slow water down. White Gate Lane, as you all know, is below this, and White Gate Lane had a horrible washout roughly around the same time period. And now, of course, we don't want to see a neighbor's driveway be flooded either. So, you know, there's pros and cons, but it's not the worst thing in the world to have the water slow. And when I did my, worked out in Washington State, we used to spend a lot of money putting wood back into streams, because it's actually healthy for them, although that's usually a little further down in the watershed than this one, but just food for thought.
Lenora, I don't know if you saw the culvert in question today, but it's almost completely obstructed.
I couldn't see the upstream end, I agree. And I mean, so I guess as a compromise, you could consider taking a chunk of the tree to loosen up, you know, free up the area that is immediately upstream of the culvert. You don't necessarily have to take the whole thing out. If I'm a landowner, I can understand sure why they might not want to look at it, but just ecologically speaking, you could just take, I don't know, like a four-foot, three-foot section off, and then free up that upstream end of the culvert.
Yeah, and in this case.
Still give a bridge for the little critters that want to get from one side to the other.
In this case, if the tree was even moved so it was at least 12 inches from the mouth of the culvert, so that water could get in.
I don't know how you're going to move that thing. That was a beast.
Yeah.
But, point taken, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Lenora.
I'll send a note off to the town manager and him take a look. It could be MED, it could be highway, something happened around that point in time. I'll have him investigate and come back to you guys, okay?
Thank you, Paul. Okay, anyone else from the public? I'll close the public hearing. All right, any further discussion among the board? I'll entertain a motion. Would you like me to make a motion?
Prove that the application is complete?
Did we accept it as complete?
I don't know, I wasn't here.
We have not accepted it yet as a complete application, so will I hear a second that it's complete? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, as I was not here for the first session.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll make a motion to approve this application. I'll second it.
I assume you'd like to add some conditions as we discussed?
Okay. You've got my list there. I've got mine in there yet this one. So we'll modify the plan to move the abreviated plants to a point approximately 15 feet to the south of the tank hatch, extending to the north along the buffer zone line, to the west property line. That's the abreviations on the upper side. Create an infiltration trench 18 inches wide, 18 inches deep, approximately 71 feet long, along the driveway edge, is located in the field. And, correct me, it's a beginning point at the breach as shown on the plan, is that correct?
Correct. There's a benchmark right at that breach that we talked as a point to start that.
It would have filter fabric along the sides only, filled with a stone, with check dams at approximately 20 feet apart. Also, leave the woodchips in place, and plant low-lying junipers on the woodchip area. Also, to have an inspection completed once remediation work is completed during the first six months of 2026. Also, copy the Wolfboro Planning Office on future maintenance reports as required by the state of New Hampshire.
And how long would you like those? One year, two years?
That's, two years, I'd say. Okay. That's all I have for amendments and conditions.
Got the plantings in there?
Yes.
Do you want to mention the non-invasive plantings?
Yes. Per the conservation notes and the letter submitted, there'd be non-invasive, no non-invasive plants, basient plants planted. Okay, that's all I have.
Roger, do you want to second that?
I'll resecond it.
Yeah. Roger seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have your approval.
Do we need a finding of fact?
Yes. The applicant has met the criteria for the special use permit expressed in 175-10A and 175-10.1. The proposal will have less detrimental impact on the wetlands. And the Wolfboro Conservation Commission has reviewed the application, noted no objection to the proposal. That's the findings of fact. All right, thank you.
All right, have a great time.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, again, continuance from the last session. This is for Octa La Vista LLC, map 218, lot 164, 217 South Main Street, site plan review. Again, I'll defer to Steve Webster, as he was here at the last session.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So 217 South Main, Roger and I did a site visit before the last meeting. We had a productive meeting. We came up with a list of items that we wanted to talk about addressing. Those were shared with the applicant. There are a number of bullet items here. Check these off as we listen to your presentation.
Sounds good.
If we miss any, I'll make you aware of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Marbury. I'm one of the members of Octa La Vista LLC, along with my brother Reed, who's here. And yes, we had a meeting earlier this month, and a list of specific things particularly related to certain waiver requests that we had made, where additional information was requested by the board. And so I have worked diligently since that time to try to get all of that put together and submitted to the board as required by the timeline provided at that meeting. And so I think the best way to go through, rather than everything, is just to go through each of the things that I have supplemented, including the plan. And so I'll reference the plan throughout, but I'll also reference some of the other things, because the plan incorporates a few other things as well. Before I get to that, though, I did receive a phone call from somebody from the board requesting variances that were granted, and so I brought a copy of all six of the recorded variances, if I may approach, just to hand those to the board. All right. The first thing that was requested, on my list at least, was a lighting plan to be provided. And so if you look at the updated site plan that has been provided, you will notice that the legend refers to four different things that pertain to the light plan. There are parking lot proposed lights, there are proposed wall-mounted lights, there are proposed bollard lights, and there is existing wall lantern lights. And so you'll notice that there are six proposed parking lights, and those are blue circles with kind of light emanating out of them. And this was put together by a light engineer, ensuring that it is in full compliance with the Town of Wolfboro lighting ordinance, to ensure that illumination is contained where it needs to be, and not bleeding out to the property boundary line in any way, but also fully compliant with the ADA requirements, especially for the lighting path where the bollard lights will be placed. You'll then see along the proposed walkway, which I'll get to, but has been modified as part of the process of getting the ADA certificate that we also procured, you'll see bollard lights are kind of a little bluish-purple circle all along the lighting path there. Each one of those represents a bollard light, with downward, fully shielded light aimed at the path itself to ensure that proper illumination is provided. You will then also notice a little blue, it's kind of like a strangely shaped square with two of the corners cut off over each of the entrances, and there are two total above the proposed stairway. One kind of in the middle of the stairway to ensure the stairs are properly illuminated, and then one at each of the entrance points. And again, the plan references a specific kind of lighting, but it also includes any lighting of similar specifications. So we didn't want to be tied to the exact one, because the lighting engineer used a company from Norway, and so he said, "As long as the specifications are the same for a manufactured in the United States lighting plan, that would work." And so that's what is included there. And the plan specifies it's that lighting, or one of similar specifications. I think that covers the lighting plan. There is an existing light that will be removed, and that's kind of the same symbol as the parking light, but it's in red, and you'll see that right by the walking path. And then the existing wall-mounted lights right now, I don't think are fully compliant, and so we've gone ahead and we're going to remove those, replacing those with the proposed wall-mounted lights over the entryways that will comply, and will better provide the proper illumination. And so that's the first thing that we have provided. We've added all of the lighting details to the plan. The second was a requested certificate of compliance from a licensed architect, and the statute specifically says that it will outline the elements of compliance necessary. And so in your packet, right behind the landscaping and planting addendum, we did, we were able to work with an architect who was able to give us this certificate or letter of compliance outlining the elements of what we'll need. That is also where we had to do some restructuring of the pathway, because one of the things we are going to have to make sure is that the main entrance to the commercial unit is ADA accessible. And so you will notice that the proposed walkway will now have, if you look at the plan, it extends from the parking lot straight horizontal, and we're going to remove the section that kind of curves down towards the building right at the front, and then it will curve straight into the building, and there will be stairs there to still provide a short, direct access. But you'll notice that the proposed walkway extends along the side of the building, and then curves back to come up to the side of that landing as well. And that will be a nice graduated slope that complies with the horizontal and vertical increase requirements of the ADA. Again, working with the architect to make sure that that's going to be, but it's going to just be a nice gradual slope to ensure that that access path is ADA accessible. And so that letter is included in the packet that we submitted, signed by a New Hampshire architect, who is going to be the architect we will continue to work with going forward as we submit plans for the permit application and everything else. The next thing that was requested was a better delineation of who prepared the plan. Specifically, what the board was concerned about is where the information came from. And so you will notice that the general notes have been substantially improved, and just more information provided to specify that the plan is based upon record and other information provided by me, Philip Marbury, agent for Octa La Vista. The information provided and used to create this plan includes the following: property tax map, property tax card, drawings from myself, including dimensions measured on-site, aerial and satellite imagery, flood zone maps, Wolfboro zoning maps, and photographs of the property and building, and existing deeds. Which leads to one of the other things that was requested by this board, was just confirmation that the deed reference in the plan was, in fact, the correct deed. It was, it is, that is the deed that we took ownership of the property through, and we have provided a copy of that recorded deed for the board, just so you have that copy as well in that packet. The next thing that the board requested is that we show the location of any of those pins that we found. And I want to reiterate that I'm not a surveyor. And so as I looked at those pins, I believed that's what they were, but I don't want to overstate or misrepresent that I'm confident those are surveying pins. But we marked those, and if you look on the plan, the first one you'll see is in the bottom-left corner, and it's just beyond the fence there, and it's a circle, and the legend again shows existing iron pipes as a circle with kind of a hash mark through it. It's very small, but that bottom-left corner is one of the pins. And then on the right-bottom corner, it's not actually on the corner, but there are two pins, and you'll see distance is marked 12 feet from the boundary line, and then the second pin we found was 11 feet 7 inches from that first pin. And again, we aren't sure of the historical significance of this. The boundary line description in our deed just goes to Main Street on that corner, and so I don't know why those pins were ever put there, but they seemed to perfectly line up with the boundary line as far as the, you know, in the one delineation, they just don't line up with the corner. And so I don't know what they're there for, but we've put them on the survey site plan, or the site plan, not survey, just so those are there as requested.
I would like to suggest that you label them IPF.
So I have them labeled as existing iron pipe in the legend?
Yeah, I was, I picked off the left one. The other two, I wasn't sure what they were. Normally on a survey plan, they label them IPF.
And again, I didn't want to do things that would make it even look like I'm representing that it is a survey, so I had the person doing this for me put it in the legend, and specifically reference those three as existing iron pipes found. And so that's the approach that we took there, that's what those three specific markings are.
Well, I think all you're saying is you found an iron pin.
Correct.
And when you look at surveys, lots of times there are iron pins wandering off somewhere that are marked as IPF, and they're obviously not the property line.
Let's see, what is the next thing? The next thing was, note where information was obtained. I've already addressed that one for the deed and verified that the deed reference was correct. You also, the board, requested that we show the proposed location for the trash bins, and so we have tucked those in behind the stairwell, kind of in the in-jog of the building, which I think will be a perfect placement for those, accessible to the residents and out of view of the public, out of view of either any of the streets, but still easy to bring in and out. The next thing that was requested was to show landscaping plans, specifically to show existing trees and trees to be removed. And so on your plan, you will see along the bottom edge, there are a series of trees that represent all of the trees between us and Mr. Hansel, and those trees are all there. And then the two trees to be removed have been both demonstrated on the map, but also we showed that the diameter of those trees, and noted on the site plan that those are the two trees to be removed. One is directly in front of the building, where we're going to put the front door for the bottom-floor residential unit, and the second one is further, further south, or I guess further southeast, looking at the orientation of the map, right along the boundary line between us and Mr. Hansel. And that tree is, it straddles the boundary line as best we can tell, and we're working with him, and he's agreed that it does need to come down. But those are both marked clearly on the plan for your reference. We have then included, the legend shows proposed planting area, and it's kind of a pink circle with a green dot in the middle. And those are scattered throughout the building, kind of along the face of the building between the windows. And then I've provided the board with a landscaping addendum in the packet of additional information, which specifies the kinds of plants that we're seeking to plant there, and specifically that we're seeking to create kind of a mixed border planting in those areas, where we have along the path, especially in the very frontmost, kind of the low shrubs, making sure that they don't encroach on the path, which would actually be a problem for the ADA accessibility, graduating up to some of the more mid-range shrubs in the back. All of these plants, with the exception of one, are local plants, are native species. The only one that's not native, as best I could tell from my research, is not an invasive species, and is permitted, bringing this proposed planting fully in conformity with the, I think it, again, don't hold me to this, but I think the requirement was that greater than, or 60% or so, or more or less, had to be native species. I think in this planting scenario, it will be far more than 80%, will be purely native species, with summersweet being the only non-native but not invasive species.
Which plant is that?
It's the summersweet, cletra, the hummingbird. It's the second bulleted item in the planting addendum, and the other five are all native species. I've provided pictures of each of the species that we're planning to plant there, and again, the only one of all of those that isn't native is summersweet, but as best I could do, I've confirmed that it is not, it is not an invasive species, it's not an impermissible one, as long as it's not the majority of the planting, which it will not be. And again, happy to answer any other questions about the planting addendum, landscaping addendum. As far as the map is concerned, just a few other things to point out. There is an existing tree that you'll see noted in the top-left portion of the building. That's an existing, again, as far as I can tell, Japanese elm tree or maple, you know? Anyway, beautiful red tree that we're planning to leave there. It's this beautiful gorgeous tree right there on the corner. And then there's a whole buffer of trees between us and the batch elders that, again, we're not planning to touch or remove. They provide a really great buffer between the batch elders and our parking lot, which I know is valuable to them, and so those will all remain in place, and they are delineated on the site plan. The next issue that the board asked us to address were to provide photos of the existing building, and specifically all four elevations. You'll notice that I provided five total pictures. That's because as I was photographing the exterior of the building, I could get a good full view elevation of three of the four sides, but the side that faces Mr. Hansel's property is a very, is kind of narrow, it's just his driveway. And so what I did there is I took a picture from one corner, looking at it, and the opposite corner, standing on Main Street, and then standing back on Mr. Hansel's property. So I think the board still has a full picture of that elevation, it's just from those two perspectives. But that's why there are five total pictures provided there, to give the complete elevation of the building. The next item that was on the list was to submit renderings of the front entry. I submitted a rendering of the front entry at the last hearing, but I went ahead and assumed maybe what you were requesting was a rendering of the stairs, and so in the packet that was provided, I resubmitted a rendering of the front entry, and then I also submitted. And then I also submitted an additional rendering of the stairs that will be in the, in the back there. In the rendering for the front entry, I specifically noted in the caption there that, that we were able to overlay using Math, not, yeah, yeah, Matthew, oh, the, the name of the company is now going to evade me, but it's a, it's a window manufacturer, Matthew Brothers, I believe. And so we got windows from, we're going to be getting windows from them, and we use their builder to show the exact kind of windows that we're going to put. And it's the same windows that are there now. It's a window with basically one vertical division and one horizontal division in each window. And so that's the windows that we're going to put back in, and that's depicted in the rendering of the front door and front landing. The next rendering of the stairwell doesn't show those windows, but I made sure to show in the caption that that, the windows that you see in that are just a result of the rendering for the stairs, and those are not the windows we're going to use, just to make sure that that was abundantly clear. Finally, nope, there's a few more, so not quite finally yet. The, the proposed replacement windows were there. I also provided to the board a complete packet of the Matthews Brothers windows that we are going to be using, that provides all their specifications, et cetera. And again, we're going with the option within that of a single vertical division and a single horizontal division. And windows that are, I think it's, it's, I think it's, I'm not an expert on windows, but I think it's called single hun when they only open from the bottom up and they don't open from the top down. But I, that's the, the specifics that we're going to be going for, for those windows. You also requested that I submit parking calculations. And so you will notice in the bottom, right below the general notes on the plan, I included a reference to section 175, 136, which requires parking spaces as follows. For each residential unit, there needs to be two parking spaces per dwelling unit. And there are two total residential here, so that's four. Secondly, for the commercial unit, there's one space for every 250 GFA. I'm actually not 100% sure, but I, my understanding as I dug into it is that that's basically the equivalent of square feet footage. And so this is an approximately 2,040 square foot commercial unit, which would come to 8.16 spaces. I rounded up, just assuming that was a safer way, so that would be nine, nine plus four would be 13, which is the exact amount of parking spaces that we have at this property, which we are very thankful for. We did go ahead also and have the person who drew the plan for me correct parking space 13, to say parking space 13, not 14. I never got an answer as to why he, he made it 14 on the front end, but it has been corrected. So now it says commercial 13, right there at the top right of the parking lot. Finally, the, the final requirement that was communicated to me was that we had to have all of this information submitted by November 14th, which I believe I got it all submitted on November 13th. And so if there are any additional questions that the board has, I'd be happy to go through them and answer them. But I am hoping that that satisfies those, those specific things. We would withdraw the waiver request as to those items, and then ask that the board accept the application.
I think there's one more thing you need to add to the plan, assuming you'd like it to be approved, and that is a block for the planning board's signature.
A what, I'm sorry?
You need a signature block. It would say approved by the Wolfboro Planning Board, the signature of the chairman and a member, and then the date.
That should, on the plan, there should be a space for the planning board to sign it as approved.
Okay. Is that something that could be added as a condition, and that I could write in or, and, and submit to the board?
You just need to do that so we can approve it, because
100%. I can take care of that for you.
Can you do it in the top portion where there's a space?
Usually it's in the title block.
Just, just saying. I do have a question. On the lighting for the parking lot and around the front of the building, are you going to go with motion sensors for the evening?
We are, and we actually are going to install automatic dimmers that they reduce to, I think the, the lighting ordinance requires 10% or less illumination after a certain time. And so we're going to install them where they automatically dim after that certain point in the night. And then all of the exterior lights over the landings are going to be motion sensor as well.
So they're not going to go out all the way, then? I'm just thinking of the neighbors and the parking lot, you know?
I, I think we're probably going to be able to turn them off and, and have the ability to turn them on and off, but the default would be that they would dim to 10% just for safety for our residences, or we could install motion sensors. I think we're, we're open to any of those possibilities to make sure that they work as they need to.
Now, you requested quite a few waivers. Did that list get modified? Is there any waivers that are still active that?
So all of the, my understanding was that all of the remaining waivers were acceptable to the board after our last meeting, and so all of the waivers that were requested this additional information, so, so the waiver, the waivers we would be withdrawing from our initial list is maybe the best way to go about that. We would be withdrawing waiver number one, related to section 17315B, because we have provided that signed letter from a licensed engineer. We would be withdrawing the waiver for section, number two, which is section 17315E1E. It's the second waiver request we had. My understanding is that waiver three, four, five were acceptable to the board. And so then it was waiver number six was the, the specification request for the garbage disposal plan, and we've provided that, so we would withdraw that waiver request. My understanding again was that waiver number seven, eight, nine, seven, eight, and nine were acceptable to the board, and so we'd leave those waiver requests in. Waiver number 10 was the one to show the proposed landscaping plan. Having provided that information, we would withdraw that waiver request. Waiver number 11 showed the location and type of, of lighting for outdoor activities. Again, I, I raised this last time, but we don't plan on there being any outdoor activities per se, and I think that's getting at kind of a different thing, but we have provided the comprehensive lighting plan that we have. And so I would leave to the board whether that one still needs a waiver, or if what we've provided, which I think is actually number 13, it's a plan for outdoor lighting, that waiver request we are withdrawing because we've submitted our plan for outdoor lighting. And then my understanding is that waiver request number 12 was not objectionable to the board, and so we leave that one in. I guess the only one I'm unsure of is number 11, because it's kind of, it's framed as a location and type of lighting for outdoor activities. And so I, again, I think that's related to some, some commercial thing that would have specific activities outside that would require special lighting, or, or something like that. The lighting that you see is the only lighting we're planning to doing. There's no additional lighting we would be implementing for any kind of outdoor activity.
I would suggest that if you don't have any outdoor activities planned, then you could comply without a waiver by saying that you have no outdoor activities planned.
Then I will withdraw that waiver request and, and affirm to this board that we have no plans for outdoor activities. I guess that would necessitate lighting other than there, you know, like the residents moving in and out, or sitting on the front, you know, yard or something like that. The current lighting, I think, would be sufficient for that, so no additional lighting would be done.
So, let's clarify, the ones that are in are three, four, five?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we grant a waiver, waivers number three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, and 12. Does that match your tally?
It does.
So I, I am concerned still about 10 landscaping plan. I, I mentioned before the lack, I mean, we're removing some trees along Main Street, and Main Street is getting a little sparse in the tree department. And I think that part of the landscaping plan should involve some, maybe not currently, but future sizable trees that could give a canopy to the road and some character return to the town. Right now, there are a couple of big trees that are coming down. And it would be very nice to have a replacement for those trees. And I, I personally would like to require that.
How far away from the road do we go, since they're going to be tearing it all up in a couple of years?
Well, so, unless they're taking on the properties, which I doubt that they will be taking right here, the state taking land, you know, see that, where that iron pin is at 12 feet in, perhaps one in that corner, 12 feet in, and one in the other forward corner, 12 feet in, so that it's, you know, reasonable that it will have room to grow. And it will provide some shade and character to the street.
You're thinking like equidistant from the doorway? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, exactly.
Frame it?
Yep.
Any suggestions as far as caliper goes? Three-inch caliper type?
Big enough, but not too costly.
I didn't hear you.
I said, big enough, but not too costly. If you want a big tree to grow, you've got to buy a smallish one.
You can transplant maples, you can do a lot of things that are, you know, under $4,000 for large trees. But I think it's tremendously worthwhile that we keep the character of Main Street. And there are a couple of really big trees here that are slated to come down.
Could we maybe put something in about them working with the tree company to figure out what's the best thing to put there that's going to look lovely?
As, as long as we're requiring them.
Something maybe native-ish, not Norway pine, you know?
I have no objection to making sure it's a native species, for sure. I, I would request that it not be too burdensome. This is a project that is already certainly stretching our ability to do it, and so I'm not opposed to planting trees there. We, we would like trees there. At some point, it becomes a legitimate financial difficulty, especially with everything else that's going on. But that's my request.
That's what, I think you also need to talk to a tree guy about it, too, because you don't really want one that's 100 feet tall right there.
Correct, yeah, and we don't want anything that's going to interfere with the power lines again. The one that's there right now is, is actually overhanging the power lines, and so as the tree people are coming in to deal with it, that's one of the issues they're having to figure out how to navigate. But, but again, we're not opposed to putting trees in there. I think that's, we love to have trees, and I think that will benefit the residential units greatly, and so, so that's a great idea, and we're not opposed to it. I would be reticent to have to put in something that's going to be a huge expense to relocate. But that's really my only concern on that front.
I've put in quite a number of these, you know, on Main Streets throughout town. I think six to date, and they don't all survive, but not a single one of them has cost me more than $2,000, so.
That's good to know.
I, I would suggest, Roger's suggestion just now, that before we have any further discussion on potential changes to the plan, such as the trees, we should vote on accepting or denying the waivers.
Well, I didn't want to waive the landscaping plan, so.
I wasn't waiving that, I don't believe.
Right.
So I believe Roger's made a motion?
Yes.
Has anybody seconded?
All second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, as I was not present.
Okay. Opposed?
None opposed.
We can move on to the, to the trees. So we're going to ask him to plant, you're going to ask him to plant a pair of trees to either side of the front entrance, $2,000 neighborhood, two and a half to three-inch caliper possibly?
Yeah, some trees that have some potential to turn into street-type trees.
Street-type trees.
Yeah.
Works. So is the addition of the trees then going to be a condition of approval?
I would hope so.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
All right.
So we were all set with the waivers.
Accept the application as complete?
May I add one more thing that I neglected to mention?
Certainly.
It wasn't specifically requested, but I did provide a final document there. It's, it's a, it's a photograph, not of our building, but of another building that uses the same siding that we want to use. And it's a deep ocean blue siding by James Hardy. And so that, that picture is there just for the board's approval and ability to consider the color that we're seeking to, to change the siding to. I apologize for forgetting that.
That's going to be the color of the building?
Correct.
We have it in our package, it's black and white, but in the blue, it looks
Let me, let me give you the one I have, so that you can at least see it.
It's like the color of the flag over there, at which point I went, ah, blue! Because it's always been white. But then I looked at it and went, oh, that's kind of nice.
May I approach?
Of course.
Does it clash with the Hansels?
I would suggest that the particular color of the building at this time may not be what the owners 50 years from now color it, so it may be not that important.
And if the board doesn't think that's important or necessary for me to establish, I'm fine. As I read, it seemed like any building change of color in a commercial mixed-use building would have to be subject to this board's approval. So we wanted to preemptively say that's the color we're seeking.
Well, and, and we do have architectural standards, and it, it sounds like you're replacing the windows in kind.
Correct.
So that's lovely. I, I don't think that our standards suggest that you can't have a colored building on Main Street.
I also don't think so.
What's that?
You want to take a look at the picture there?
Yeah, no, I, I saw it in color somehow online, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're saying it's Hardy board siding?
Yes. Yeah, ultimately, we think it'll look really nice. Right next door, Mr. Hansel's, is a red house of similar kind of look, and I think it'll, I think it'll contrast but also complement that look very well.
And then you get across the street, and you got what, a white house?
Yep. There, I think there's a yellow one right down the street a little ways, too, but.
Doug, you've made a motion to accept the plan as complete?
I made a suggestion, too. I didn't actually make the motion.
Oh, okay.
But certainly I will make a motion to accept the plan as complete.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So the application is complete. Anyone here to speak from the public?
Open the public, public hearing?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Yeah.
And good evening. So, once again, I'm here to talk about the survey. I had a brief discussion with Mr. Marbury. My name is John Thurston. And at the last meeting, Vaughn spoke about costs for large acreages and having not to burden the, the applicant for large surveys, but one of the things that we're trying to do in our town is we're trying to be consistent, and we're trying to help our codes office out so that when places are being developed, they can go back with an as-built, and they can recognize where the building is and where the pins are. Tonight, we heard from Mr. Marbury, he wasn't quite sure what pin was what, but they were kind of in the, in the area. So when you, when you have a situation like this, it's probably a good thing to try to get the smaller lots within our town that may be purchased now and turned over later to somebody else, so that these properties are surveyed, so that when our codes officer goes out, whether or not it's Joel or the next guy, everybody knows where the, where the property lines are. So I don't think it's a, a big burden for property owners on small lots. Mr. Marbury said he paid a lot of money for one of his other lots, but I, I suspect that was a large parcel. As to Main Street trees, I think there's a few that I just looked up. We have the Collmanar Ginkgo. We have the Armstrong Gold Maple. And we have the Main Street Shengtong Maple, a smaller, urban-friendly cultivar with dense, fine-textured crown, reaching 25 to 30 feet tall. It is drought tolerant and handles a wide range of soils. And these are recommended for Main Streets in New Hampshire. So with that said, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Anyone else to speak? During them, I'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this application with the waivers as noted during the discussion earlier. And the condition that two trees be installed as discussed.
as discussed, the species and size to be established later. Those trees should be installed, certainly in the spring, not now in the wintertime. We'll take, it will require a revised plan with the signature blocks for planning board approval. Are there any other conditions that anybody would like to suggest? That's my motion.
Will you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's what we're talking about.
Example.
Only if you want it signed.
All right. The next item on the agenda is discussion of zoning proposals. The first one, 5A, is the accessory dwelling unit update to state law. You'll have in your packets the ADU Existing Ordinance. And then following that is something labeled "ADU Track Changes," which shows the changes that our former planning director has recommended to bring the Wolfboro ordinances in compliance with state law. The most significant of which is that detached ADUs are now allowed by right, which were not previously permitted within the town of Wolfboro.
I only noticed a couple of things really different than what we were doing. And one seems to be that they can have 900 square feet now.
I believe that's correct.
And the other one that we were looking at was in a detached unit to have the entrance to the side. Bill was saying something about we could probably put that into design specs, or we could just ignore it at this point.
Well, I don't think that we can ignore it if it's in our ordinance. So the point was to remove the conflicting information from our ordinances.
Right, but I don't think that's in our existing anything.
Ah.
Yeah, that--
Well, certainly, if it's already controlled by state law, it's not something that we need to have redundancy in ours.
No, it's not even said anything with it there either. And the dimensions we have in other places where from one building to the next, it has to be a certain distance. So those things are already in our ordinance somewhere, is according to this.
Yes.
But it was that if we had, like, the garage next door that we wanted to do it, it was suggested that instead of having two buildings with front doors facing the street, so it looks like two houses, that the ADU would face either away on one side or the other, so that it still looked like a garage or barn or whatever, not necessarily another house. So is that, without going back through all the pages of our things, any about the top of their head, do we have anything like that in our design recommendations?
The way I read this is that as long as it complies with setbacks, it can, and is not exceeding 950 square feet, not counting subterranean areas, it can be wherever it wants to be. The way I read the law that came down.
Yeah, I believe, Vaughn, I think you're correct in that the state is treating it as a single-family residence.
Right.
So just a small cottage.
It doesn't matter where the door is. It doesn't matter if it's in front of the house. It just has to comply with setbacks, is the way I read the law. I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, and sewage. But if you have an existing building as of last July, doesn't matter where it is, you can turn it into an ADU.
Right.
If you have a boathouse over the water, you can turn it into an ADU.
As long as your septic is up to date, yeah. Yeah, that's kind of what we'd said anyway with the septic systems. They all had to comply anyway. So that wasn't a big deal. It was just those few small design issues that we had.
That we don't have anymore.
We don't have anymore. Although we do have minimums of how close buildings can be together, and I think we matched that anyway. So if you're building a new garage that's detached, it had to be a certain distance away from snow.
It's really separation for fire. It's 20 feet on the same lot. So it has to be 20 feet away or attached with a fire barrier between it. That's a building code thing. That's not really, you obviously have to comply with the building code.
I didn't realize it was the code like that for fire. So it looks like we did a pretty good job setting ourselves up, and then the state just took it.
Now, I continue to be opposed to bringing this up, but there are some bills going before the legislature which will address some of the worst features of this particular bill and the threat they pose to our lakes. And I think we should wait to see what happens next July and whether some of the worst effects of this have been ameliorated.
Well, Roger, I agree with you. And I think to your point, we are late enough in the year that it would be a challenge to both provide drafts of the change in ordinance that is required and have it prepared for a vote in March.
But didn't you say the same thing last year for the same thing?
Maybe.
Well, and as of today, we have no articles going on the ordinance.
Well, we do have some that will be coming up, and that'll be discussed, I think, at the next meeting. So we have shorefront potential changes. And then one of the items on the agenda that we have this evening is ridgeline. Again, I don't know if we're going to have it prepared in time for the next vote, but it is something for discussion.
My opinion on this, though, is we should get it in on the books. We can amend it later as things get changed. But we're still kind of in limbo. We've got nothing except for grabs.
It already is. If you come in with an application for something that complies with state law today, you're going to get it.
Yep.
It's state law.
Yeah, certainly, we have to comply with state law.
Right.
My point was more getting the Wolfboro written ordinances in compliance, so that it leads to less confusion for potential applicants.
Yeah, I think we had discussed cleaning up, that you have to hook up to town water, even if there's no water pressure. We had looked at amending that provision. I also would like to see us require that building permits be issued with it, be posted in a conspicuous place within seven days of being issued, because right now, the law's been changed so that you can get a building permit, sit on it for 30 days, and all appeals are done, even though nobody knows it's been issued. And when we look at the calendar, the last day to publish the notice for a hearing, first hearing on a proposed amendment, is January 1. January 12th would be the last day to hold a first public hearing. And that's assuming you do a second one. The last day for, to post for a second hearing is, or a last hearing is January 15th. But that doesn't really work, because you would then hold the hearing on January 26th. But on that date, the town warrant has to be posted. So that doesn't work. So we are running out of time. As I look at some of these, it might be addressed simply. I think the adaptive reuse is something that's going to get support. And one might not be that difficult to pursue.
So Roger, thank you. So Roger's jumping ahead to item 5C on our agenda with state ordinances updates. And that's information in your packet labeled "Changes to Planning and Zoning Laws in 2025" by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. So I'll just run quickly through which ones we're discussing. The first is-- I don't know yet, but let's get them all on the table, and then we can decide how we're going to proceed. SB 284 prohibits municipal zoning ordinances from requiring more than one residential parking space per unit. SB, I'm sorry, HB 457 prohibits municipal zoning ordinances from restricting the number of occupants of any dwelling unit to less than two occupants per bedroom. SB 283 enacts new statutes, RSA 674:77 and RSA 674:78, that require municipalities to exclude from floor-area ratio calculations any part of a building that is entirely or partially below ground level, including basements, cellars, and sublevels. SB 282 permits residential buildings up to four floors above grade to have only one stairway under conditions to be established by the State Building Code Review Board, rather than the two presently required. Let's see. HB 296, with regard to building and subdivision on Class 6 in private roads. NR 676:5 appeals to the zoning board of adjustment. Currently, a building permit for erection of a building on a private road can only be authorized by the local governing body after review and comment by the planning board. This amendment will allow, as an alternative to going to the planning board for review and comment, that the applicant can instead establish that the private road identifies and complies with a policy adopted by the governing body. Therefore, if the governing body adopts a policy for building on private roads, and the applicant complies with that policy, then the planning board input is not required.
I think to that note, I think we have already had language and items tagged on to Class 6 road projects that took the liability from the town. And they're suggesting that we make this a standard form so that it's the same for every project. So I think we should probably process that and have one single form that does this.
I think we already have the form. What this does is basically require you to allow--
Right.
Issue building permits on Class 6 roads, something I've been uniformly opposed to. I can tell you that there's a class-- the Class 6 road where I am happens to be a major snowmobile trail. And if you get people building houses out there, you're going to cut a major snowmobiling trail that goes from east of here down out onto Winnipesaukee. And there are all sorts of other headaches in there when you have a liability on Class 6 roads.
We don't have a choice.
No, we don't have a choice. But I'm not, the question is what? There are two of these statutes, and I think we would need to look at them and figure out, because we don't, right now, our procedure on Class 6 road is governed by 67441, which says that they have to come in before the planning board. We provide input, and then it goes to the board of selectmen. But they seem to be saying that-- that you don't have to-- well, it's not clear on what they're saying. You just don't have to do any more. You just got to give them a permit if they sign the form. But then it also gets into private roads, and it's not clear to me how that is affected.
So it looks like the second line here, without requiring approval from the governing body.
Well, you have to get a building permit on, if you do the, if you do the Senate Bill 281. It looks as though you just go in and get a building permit, and you've got to sign the form.
Right.
And record it. And I'm not sure what 296 does. It's different. Or how the two of them work.
I expect we're going to need some input or interpretation on this from whatever planning department we end up with.
Or our attorney.
Yes. So, I'm sorry? Of course. Good, Paul.
Roger, this is probably up your alley. HB 296, if I read this, and I'm probably more wrong than right, we have about 35% to 40% of our town road miles are private roads and Class 6 roads. If I, do I read this correctly? That if somebody on a road with a P on it has a lot, and they want to build on that lot, does this require them to go to the zoning board?
I'm not quite, if it's a Class 6 road, I think they could just go--
It would be a private road. So, you know, we have, you know, 35-- I think we've got 35 miles of private roads in Class 6 in the town. So if somebody has a P, a private road, does this suggest that if I wanted to build on a private road, it's probably part of a subdivision, or not, but it's a private road, I have to go to the zoning board in order to get a building permit?
You didn't.
That's what I'm reading. I don't know if, I may be--
The second part says the alternative is to go to the planning board for review and comment. And they need to establish that the private road identifies and complies with the policy adopted by the governing body. Well, I don't know what our policy looks like.
So, yeah, so, you know, I'm reading this, too. This is currently, a building permit for the erection of a building on a private road can only be authorized by the governing body. That would be the select board, I guess, after review and comment by the planning board. So if, so let's just take it out on the zoning board. If a person wants to build on a private road, they have to go here and then go to the select board to get a building permit?
Well, it looks like you're requiring it to comply with the governing body's policy. We already have a Class 6 road policy from the BOS. So if it doesn't comply with that, then that's-- I don't know, it contradicts the other one.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we have a policy by state statute, it's 67441, for Class 6 roads. But if you're on a private road, and it's, I think you just get a building permit. You look at all the--
Yeah, I think that's correct. If you read the last sentence of the first paragraph--
I think that's the way it goes.
Yeah.
I'm just reading this, and I'm wondering if we are going to be compelled, maybe we already have one, Roger, by your words, maybe are we going to be compelled to actually create a policy at the select board level? Or do we already have one?
Well, Paul, if I'm not mistaken, the current policy by the select board requires the applicant to come before the planning board. And that would contradict what it's saying. Well, I guess it doesn't contradict exactly. But this is saying that if the select board has a policy for building on private roads, and the applicant complies with that policy, then planning board--
Then you guys aren't required.
Right. It's circular.
Circular argument.
Reasoning.
Yeah.
And it's in conflict with the RSA 67441 above it.
So I wasn't totally crazy?
No, it doesn't make sense.
I mean, there's some of the legislation that was passed in this recent session that contradicts other provisions. I think we would need to look at the wording of the statute to figure out what they're talking about.
So I think, Paul, to your earlier point, this also is going to require an opinion from our legal counsel to see how our current policy is affected by this statute.
And the more lenient one, where it can go by whatever policy we have as a governing board, was passed September 13th of 2025. And then this other one that's more open is effective July 1, 2026. So it hasn't happened yet, according to this paper. We have until July 1, 2026, to be more stringent, as long as we have a policy by our governing board.
All right, moving on to the next one is the HB 92 mandates that a zoning board of adjustment member shall recuse him or herself from voting on matters previously voted on by the same member while serving as a member of the planning board in its quasi-judicial capacity. I don't think that's going to be of much concern for the town of Wolfboro, but it should be noted. And then lastly, HB 413 extends the vesting time period that protects approved subdivision and site plans from changes in local and planning and zoning. Currently, approved plans are vested for 25, within 24 months from approval, and the HB 413 extends that to three years, and projects will substantially be completed within seven years rather than the previous five years. So, back to Kathy's point earlier, with regard to ADU and everything else, what, if any of these are we going to try to address in the coming vote in March? We'll have to decide pretty quickly.
We didn't talk about the ridgeline yet.
Yes, that's true, yeah. I mentioned it, but that's, the next topic is, that Peter was helpful in bringing forward, there's an explanation of scenic ridgeline and scenic shoreline protection. Now, Peter, do you want to introduce this?
Some history, I came from the state of Connecticut, and probably 80 years ago or more, maybe 100 years ago, going through the legislature, there was a ridgeline protection bill which went through that on trap rock or basaltic ridges, you couldn't build houses that looked out. Now, if you go to western Connecticut, there are lots of non-basalt ridges, so the law didn't apply there. So the law is something which you want to deal with. And as I was thinking about this whole process, as I say, there are two ways to go about this. One is sort of the simple way, which really is not, it is not hard for a property owner to deal with, and the other ends up being that you end up having to jump through a whole bunch of hoops. What I would suggest is that the master plan does say that we should maintain the look of our community, and the ridgelines are part of that, so therefore, we should at least try to work on that. And so what I have proposed here is prospective owners assess whether the new construction can be viewed at a distance from roads or water bodies. This will apply for construction on hills above 700 feet, which tend therefore to be seen from a distance. There are some places probably at 800 or 850 feet in Wolfboro, where because of the topology in that area, in that area, they are not going to be seen from anywhere. So therefore, exceptions to this requirement can be made on hillsides with photographs of the property looking downhill in seasons with no leaves, with the zoning enforcement officer making a determination. So in other words, there'd be exceptions to this particular rule. Of course, if you were building on a lakeshore or water body, this rule would apply to you. The requirements or the restrictions on that kind of construction, I don't believe, are terribly onerous. All outdoor lighting must be dark sky compliant and not shine outwards, which is sort of a standard for what we have in Wolfboro anyway. The outside structures, including roofs and walls, should be of muted dark colors to blend with the forest and land around their structures, and the light reflective index found in most paint company chips should be less than 50%. And this is not very hard to deal with. And at the same time, when you look at a white house, it can be seen from a very long distance away. If you look at a house with a muted color, you can't see the thing. And, you know, and most likely in the wintertime, that darker colored house is going to be shaded by some trees or something like that, and so even when there's snow, it's not going to be an issue. No structures on ridgelines should be higher than the ridgeline to prevent an artificial look of the ridges. Now, this may end up having some implications for where that structure can be built, and therefore, it might end up being, if the roadway or the driveway was coming up from the backside of the hill, the driveway might end up having to be longer. So therefore, there is some issue there, but, so, but we do not want to have, prevent the artificial look of the ridges. All areas where excavation results in lighter colored ground should be ceded to provide a natural green color. This ends up not being something which is going to be affecting most people, because most of the dirt ends up being reasonably dark color, and they are going to put some kind of vegetation on top of it. So I think the regulation ends up being something which is relatively easy for any landowner to comply with, and so therefore, is not terribly onerous. And you can go the other direction, where you have to have a surveyor document the property, slopes and visibility, the number of trees to be cut, but of course, then those trees can grow back up, or if you say that they have to be at a certain height, then you have to go back and make sure they're cut continually or whatever. And so I think that the simple plan ends up being one which ends up being easy to comply with, protects our viewscape, and ends up being something which is a reasonable proposal.
Peter, how do we tie this into the logging that gets approved by the board of selectmen?
What did you say?
How do we tie what you just said, about everything being certain heights and not artificial and everything, how do we tie that ridgeline no-cut zone into the permitting that comes through for loggers through the board of selectmen?
You mean intent to cut, I presume?
Yeah.
That's just tax. That's just tax.
And they come through and they just take out the whole ridgeline, as I can see from my house?
If you end up doing a cut like that, it may be an eyesore for some period of time, but it ultimately becomes very green and not a problem. I know people who lived across Birch Hill, from Birch Hill, which is down in south of here, it was horrible for the first, you know, couple of years, but now you look across there, it's fine.
It looks fine, but I'm never going to get those pines back. Everything is 50 feet shorter and a big gap. Just saying, it could have been mentioned maybe on the application, that maybe a few of those could have been left so that we don't have an artificial now brown space, because there's now no diversity over there, trees, we have just one color oak. Not that, no, logging's fine, all that stuff, but it wasn't really thought out as to how it was going to look from a ways away. With them being on that ridge, it's, you know, full side of Crescent Lake, all along Route 28, and from Wentworth, they're right on the top.
The selectmen have no control over logging.
That is correct.
The intent to cut is strictly for taxation.
That is correct.
Paying of the timber tax.
Yeah.
So does anybody have any idea how to fix that?
Yeah, we don't, we don't get in front of an individual coming in and saying, I intend to cut. We get a, we get something from the assessor after it is done, and we approve the tax. And there have been, as you've observed, there have been a couple of situations where we've all driven up and down the street and said, what, what's this? And it's their right to do that. But I was going to, Peter, I was going to ask you a similar question. I, I think we might get into a debate, I like, I like the less complicated approach. We might get into a debate about, what am I viewing? Am I viewing your garage ergo? What percentage of your house are we viewing from the street? And then to Julie's question, what's to stop somebody, nothing, from having a house set back 200 feet from the, from the road and just, just decking the, decking the property all the way down the street?
Yeah, because that's the flip side of that. They could log it first and then come in and put in a house.
Or they could do what some people do, is they buy the property, they log it, they sell it, they take the, they take, they take the timber. They seek forgiveness after they've stumped the property, they've taken all the stumps out, so there's literally no ability to count how many hardwoods were removed, then they sell it to somebody else who then has to go build a house on it.
Right, with everything that Peter just said.
I mean, we're not solving a problem here, but that's kind of what happens. Okay?
But this, the way this is worded, I think, ends up protecting the viewscape.
Protecting what?
It protects the viewscape, so therefore, I don't think that, you know, and I think that the, the idea that you can find out what the light reflection index is off the paint chips ends up sort of meaning that it's not even very hard to deal with. Basically, what you're saying is that you can't have a, what, a white house or a yellow house, you can have something which is more muted, and that's the only requirement which you end up having. It's something that I would wish, actually, that the, the select board could put in as a requirement for everybody with white houses around my lake to paint them dark, but that's never going to happen.
Maybe you could amend that to at least paint the lakeshore view, you know, a darker color, and they could have the white house on the other side.
I think it would be useful to have a map with all of the elevations above 700 feet noted, just so that we can see if that makes sense. It's only, it's a little under 200 feet over the top of the lake, the Big Lake.
That's right.
So that's a lot.
It is.
Yeah, but we should see what it is visually.
I can easily present or produce that. And there is some areas, as I said, that are going to be above that line, which are obviously not an issue. I think up towards Sargeant's Pond is an area where there's plenty of property there that's not going to be an issue.
Because it's a long slope, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping it simple myself. The complicated hiring people to argue is just arduous.
Yeah, the enforcement is a challenge.
And maybe, you know, a line explaining, you know, if we can see you, you can see me, you know, for the people that want to, you know, have this house that's right out on the edge on the cliff, but you don't want to have curtains everywhere, you know?
Well, the only thing I could say to that, from my personal experience, is that our house has a wonderful view of all of Wolfboro and the surrounding area, but while I can see Goodhue and Hawkins, for example, I can see their marina from my house, I can't see my house from there, because the trees come up just about to the bottom of the railing of our deck, so it almost completely obscures our house. And then, of course, the gray shingles that we have blend in with everything.
Yeah, so you did it.
Yeah.
There, of course, might be some individual, and I don't know whether, this is realistic, but there might be some individual who would go and find some neon color which was below the 50% light reflective index and paint their house that way, but they probably really wouldn't want to live there.
That's true. So does this leave us with choosing some stuff to set up for hearings or not?
Well, I think, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but the explanation page that you provided shows some of the guidelines for an ordinance, but it's not presented in the plan of an ordinance, although you've also, we've also got some things from New Hampshire DES that provides some steep slope and ridgeline protection background. I don't, however, see something that would be considered a, an ordinance that we could present for warrant article. Or am I mistaken? Is there something that we could draft as a warrant article?
I guess I would need to know the parameters that I need to work through, not having written a whole lot of warrant articles in my life.
Yeah, I understand, and I'm not necessarily asking you to do that now, and perhaps we need to ask our interim planner if what you've provided here is something that could be drafted into a ridgeline protection ordinance, and that person may also have experience doing this for other municipalities as well.
Yeah, they may have something in their Lakes Region Planning Commission files.
All right, so.
There are, if you go over to a lake in western New Hampshire, and I'm not going to come up with the name of it, but they have a, an ordinance which was put in around that lake.
Newfoundland?
Newfoundland, yes. And at the same time, it was somewhat difficult to get there, and it probably doesn't do a whole lot more than what we are saying, because what we're saying or what this models is something which is easy to deal with, and I think solves the problem.
All right, so I know that our town manager has a meeting with the Lakes Region Planning Commission, I believe Thursday, to discuss use of that resource as our interim planning. So I think that's probably an appropriate time, once the town manager has finished that discussion, and assuming we do come to some arrangement, which I'm confident we will, then I can talk to that interim planner about drafting an ordinance that we might be able to consider at a future session this year.
And I'd like to see it expanded beyond homeowners. What about properties such as Sugar Hill, that's very white?
Property owners.
Property owners.
Or how about any property, any lots?
But I just want us to make sure that we mean everything.
Everybody.
Yeah, even an empty lot that they go in and log, I'd like to see part of a ridge left.
Yeah, yeah, so rather than prospective homeowners, it should just be property owners.
Property owners.
Yeah.
The white siding on Sugar Hill is vinyl.
Yeah.
Yep.
Ouch.
You can see it from Alton.
You can see it from the, from Altonborough, you said?
Alton.
All right, so I'll take that action to discuss this.
Do we want to hear from the public on this one?
Oh, sure. Well, we are, why don't we get through our discussion here, and then we'll have public comment, and people can speak about all, whatever they'd like.
Okay.
So that's, that's, we've discussed the ridgeline. Let's go back to ADU. Are we going to then, do we want to look at updating our ADU now or wait until we see what comes from the further state action? Roger suggested waiting.
I'm fine with what Bill has got pulled together. It's slightly better than what we had, it's ready to go.
So does anybody have any comment, a feeling of which way you think we should go?
I think there is, well, I worked on one bill, and it addresses solely the shorefront, the protected shoreline, which is 250 feet back. It does not change anything anywhere else, but it basically makes it so that detached ADUs can be permitted by right, by conditional use permit, or by special exception, which was the law prior to this July, and, or, but you're not, a municipality is not mandated to allow them. And I think allowing detached ADUs in the shoreline is just a prescription for disaster. The only thing it'll produce is sanitary bacteria and short-term rentals. And if you go back to the, in the 70s, maybe into the 60s, a lot of zoning ordinances and homeowners associations allowed guest cottages, and those disappeared very quickly when they found out how much trouble they were. And I think you're looking at overuse, you're looking at soil compaction, you're looking at what happens if we got two houses and people want boats, they want rafts, it just poses a real threat to our lake, and there's the prospect of having that addressed with legislation. And rather than adopting the state statute now, which I think is a disaster, this would give us, it would mean, we would then have to go back if something passes next year and change it. And I think rather than going ahead now, we should wait to see what happens in a year.
Any opposing viewpoints?
It's mine.
Julie?
Yeah, I mean, this is a state law, so if somebody wants to do that, they can come in tomorrow and request a permit.
And get one.
And they would get one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, as long as everybody understands that.
Yeah, the issue here is not whether they're allowed to or not. Clearly, they are allowed to do that, Kathy. I think the issue we're discussing is whether we want to go through the effort of generating a warrant article and updating our ordinances now, or wait to see what happens with potential future legislation at the state level.
Understanding that some could get approved.
Yes, understanding that some could get approved, that's right.
That is correct.
I don't see any reason to wait. This is our third try at it, without actually going to warrant article, because it's been held up because other things are more important.
Mm-hmm.
Can I go back a second for ridgeline protection?
Sure, go ahead.
Steep slopes are also part of the issue associated with ridgeline. with ridge line protection, but we have regulations associated with that in our own code, so therefore we don't really need to worry about that.
Yep.
Correct.
Would either Julie or Roger?
Well, we already have a steep slope ordinance.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Julie or Roger, would you like to make a motion towards your viewpoint?
I'll make a motion that we do not propose an ADU amendment for presentation at this March town meeting.
Would anybody like to second that?
I'll second that.
Peter seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed, Julie and Paul. All right, so the motion passes.
You want to do it quickly?
No, I...
Oh, you don't want to...
All right, let's see.
That's the whole big thing.
Can I, can I just do one last thing? Not to reopen the conversation or vote, but to reopen the conversation. On the ADU, it says where municipal service is not provided, sewer service is not provided, we know where those places are.
I think we've already voted on that.
I just want to get clarification, Roger.
I'm bringing it back up.
Can I just get a clarification or is that out of order? Just a clarification. Thank you.
Certainly, it's not going to change our action.
No, no, no. I said I don't want to change the action. I just want to make sure I understand something here. Where municipal service is not provided, the septic system shall meet water supply and pollution control requirements for the combined system demand for the total occupancy of the premise. RSA 485A colon 38. And so that's if somebody has, that's what I understand, if somebody has a, a septic system for a three-bedroom and they add a, an ADU which has two bedrooms, that's five bedrooms, that makes it non-compliant.
Correct.
Is that right? That would be the way it would work?
Yeah. They would have to design a system that could accommodate five.
You'd have to crank up the septic system. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
But not install it.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
We skipped one that says parking spaces.
Yeah, I, I had mentioned that briefly earlier. It was a reduction in the required number of parking spaces that we are allowed to mandate. Currently, I believe, well, our ordinances presently, I believe, say that you, for an ADU, for example, you need a minimum of two.
Two.
And now you can't require more than one.
ADU is one.
Yeah, but it doesn't say ADU.
Yeah, per unit.
Single-family dwelling is two.
Single family is two.
And then in multi-family, it's tiered.
Yeah.
So this is saying still just one per house is what, what it's going down to now?
So what the new, the new ordinance says, you can't require more than one parking space per unit.
Which I don't think we use anymore, right?
We have actually. In the recent past we have, but we can't any longer. So again, this is similar to the ADU discussion in that it's an update to our ordinances to comply with state law, but we have to comply with state law regardless.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's been two spaces since the seven days and apparently one of the arguments that was made in favor of it had to do with the southern part of the state where they were requiring like four parking spaces. And the, I mean, in most of the state where you have people on septic systems, you're going to have two parking spaces. You're not going to get a lot, you can't get two parking spaces on. And if they did it and if people built one space, we'd have a major problem because you couldn't plow any of the streets.
That's right.
Well, that was, that was my thought.
That's right.
You know, they go, oh, we got on-street parking. Where?
Yeah, ain't any.
All right, is there any further discussion we'd like to have or can I open public comment? Would anybody from the public like to speak?
Ann Blodgett, thanks for tackling ridge line. Peter, thank you. That's your legacy. We'll all be able to look up at the hills when we're 90 and say, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Ann.
I think that's...
He's going to have to paint his house blue.
Yeah, with, you know, trees on.
Any further comments or topics anybody would like to bring up? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second. Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make it clear that on the ransom property, that we approved their application so that they should be able to get a permanent occupancy permit.
Yeah, they, they currently have a temporary certificate of occupancy.
Correct.
And they were trying to get this approval so that they could get a permanent one.
I just want to go in the record for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, adjourn.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.